Welcome to the Goodyear City Council Meeting. We're excited to have you be a part of this important public process. Tonight, you will have the opportunity to address City Council on both non-agenda and agenda items. The agendas and the speaker request cards are located on the tables outside of council chambers. You must fill out a speaker card in order to address the City Council. Please hand in your completed card to the city clerk before the start of the meeting. If the meeting has already begun, please hand it to any city staff. You may also check the "I do not wish to speak" option on the card. This allows you to still voice your opinion on an item on the record without having to speak. Public comment on a non-agenda item will take place during the citizen comment portion of... Welcome to the Goodyear City Council Meeting. We're excited to have you be a part of this important public process. Tonight, you will have the opportunity to address City Council on both non-agenda and agenda items. The agendas and the speaker request cards are located on the tables outside of council chambers. You must fill out a speaker card in order to address the City Council. Please hand in your completed card to the city clerk before the start of the meeting. If the meeting has already begun, please hand it to any city staff. You may also check the "I do not wish to speak" option on the card. This allows you to still voice your opinion on an item on the record without having to speak. Public comment on a non-agenda item will take place during the citizen comment portion of the evening. These are items that don't appear on tonight's formal agenda. The city clerk will call your name when it's time for you to speak. At that time, please approach the podium and state your name for the record. We ask that you speak clearly into the microphone. You'll have a maximum of three minutes, and there is a timer visible from the podium. When the light changes from green to yellow, your time is coming to an end. When the light turns red, your time is up. Note that you may also choose not to speak if other speakers before you have said what you wanted to say. Shouting, cheering, and loud noises will not be tolerated, and violators may be removed for disrupting the meeting. Goodyear City Council meetings stream live on Facebook and YouTube and online at GoodyearAZ.gov. Thank you for your participation in tonight's meeting.
I'd like to call to order the regular meeting for June 24, 2019. Please join Councilmember Stiff in the pledge allegiance and invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gracious God, from whom all good proceeds, grant us your humble servants, your holy inspiration, that we may set our minds on things that are right and with your merciful guidance, help us to accomplish them according to your will. We praise and thank you, Lord, that you have made yourself known to us. Lead us now in lives of service and obedience to your will. We pray for those affected by the Woodbury Fire and those who are fighting to contain it. Please keep them and the men and women serving this city and this nation under your care regardless of where they may be stationed. Amen.
Thank you, Councilman Stiff. All right, roll call, but we do have Councilwoman Bazila will not be with us tonight. So I need a motion and a second to excuse him. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Vice Mayor, by Councilmember Camphill and Councilwoman Kano. All right, let's vote on it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. We have no communication tonight, so now is the time for citizens who would like to address the City Council on any non-agenda item within the jurisdiction of the City Council. Do we have a card?
Yes, Mayor. Chuck Coleman.
All right, Mr. Coleman. Just to give you the information, you're allowed three minutes. I think you've been here before.
No.
No, okay, first time. So the yellow light will let you know you have 20 seconds left to speak. Before you begin to speak, identify yourself clearly by stating for the record your name and if you are a Goodyear resident. Thank you.
Yes, my name is Chuck Coleman. I am a Goodyear resident. Yes, we are here today to thank you for considering the prospect of putting a aeromodel park in Goodyear. One of the things that aeromodelling is done, I think you'll see in the brochure, that it is certainly a worthwhile endeavor. Not only is it a great hobby, but the education for children is second to none. There's many people behind me that started as young children with their fathers going out to the RC Park. And myself, my mom built me an airplane when I was young, I was about five, and I later spent 21 and a half years in the Air Force. Actually worked on an airplane that you see right there, much bigger, of course. And in fact, I actually believe that the mayor's husband flew this very same airplane in Vietnam. This is the actual flying model. But more than just a hobby, again, it brings commerce, it brings an excitement, it brings activities. And we have the opportunity to actually build something that will be a legacy for many, many years to come. Future generations will be exposed to aviation, the wonder of flight, and be able to hopefully someday enter into military aviation, some even become astronauts. So it is certainly something that we see as the only park in the West Valley. Many parks are out there throughout the valley, and they definitely attract a lot of people. They attract people from a variety of different walks of life. And the couple of the people I'd like to thank right now are Nathan and David. They are certainly instrumental, and they took charge and actually were very curious as to what it is we're trying to do. And I really want to thank them for putting forth the effort and understanding of what we're trying to accomplish. Other than that, I thank you for your time and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much, Mr. Coleman.
Thank you.
Very interesting. Thank you for bringing the model airplane tonight. Thank you.
And your husband can come and fly with us anytime?
Thank you.
I have another card, Mayor. Clark Landrum.
Good evening, yes.
Good evening. I didn't know if you were going to give me mine. Longtime listener, first time caller. So Clark Landrum, I'm representing Waste Management of Arizona. We're located at 18665 West McDowell Road here in Goodyear, Arizona. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council staff, and residents of Goodyear. After partnering and servicing the city of Goodyear for the past 12 years, this will be our last week as residential trash and recycling collection services provided by Waste Management. On behalf of our entire Goodyear-based Waste Management team, we wanted to thank the city and the residents for the opportunity to partner together over the past 12 years. We look forward to the opportunity in the future of having an opportunity to provide our resources when the need arises again, and we wanted to wish the city and the residents good luck and best wishes in the future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Is that it? Okay. Then we'll go to the consent agenda. Will the city clerk please read Consent Agenda Items 1 through 13 by title only, please?
1. Approve the draft minutes. 2. Approve an amendment to the off-duty intergovernmental agreement at State Farm Stadium. 3. Amendment to intergovernmental agreement for law enforcement services in Sonoran Valley. 4. First Amendment to agreement for basic animal control services between Maricopa County and City of Goodyear. 5. Intergovernmental agreement with Alafria Union High School District #216 for school resource officer services. Number 6. Intergovernmental agreement with Alafria Union High School District #216 for school resource officer services. Number 7. Approval of lease agreement for Operation BMX Track. Number 8. Recommend approval of new Series 12 liquor license for Cheddar's Scratch Kitchen. Number 9. Recommend approval of a new Series 12 liquor license for Robson Reserve. 10. Replat of Cantomea Parcel 35. 11. City Council Subcommittee Appointments. 12. Approve the fiscal year 2019 and fiscal year 2020 budget transfers. And 13. Affluent discharge agreement between the City of Goodyear and the Buckeye Water Conservation and Drainage District.
Thank you. Does anyone in the council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Yes, Councilman Lortano.
Number 4, just for a quick information for the public.
All right, so you'd like a presentation for number 4. All right, is there any others? I know there's one from the city clerk.
I believe we need to remove 13.
And there'll be no presentation. Is it going to be still on tonight?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, they still will present, but there's additional information.
Explanation with 13. Is there one other?
Should just be the two.
All right, we're all set. So what I would like to do, council, is I'd like to have a motion for 1, 2, 3, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, and 12. Do I hear a motion for that?
So moved.
All right, a motion from Vice Mayor, Stiff, and a second from Councilman Camphill. So roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Stiff?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Kano?
Aye.
Councilmember Lortano?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Okay, very good. So let's start with number 4, and so there'll be a presentation. Our chief's going to do that. Chief Guyer.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Councilmember Lortano, thank you for the opportunity to talk a little bit about animal control. I'm not sure, I'll be really, really quick, but shouldn't take too long. So first, what I'd like to do is just talk about the current state and the way we are today with our contracts with animal control. Then talk about some approximate costs and considerations if we would assume that service or at least some of those services here in Goodyear, and then provide a recommendation. So our current state, we contract with Maricopa County Animal Care and Control an amount of $79,000 a year, which includes things like, for example, responding to stray dog calls, vicious animals, or animal bite calls. And because of this contract, all the rabies licenses and lease law enforcement is handled by the county, which takes a huge burden off the PD. We also have a contract with Humane Society for about $25,000, which covers the things that animal control doesn't cover. For example, animal abuse and neglect, injured stray animals, abandoned animals left at properties, or when we make an arrest of somebody that has a pet, it covers those costs. So the current service we provide today in our current state is about $105,000 a year for our animal services. The challenge with some of our contracts, and this is where some of our residents, I feel, complain about the service, is that's not necessarily 24/7. For example, the county operates on a priority schedule where they have a priority 1, they have priority 1 and 2 calls, which are things like dog bites where the animal's at large or aggressive animals, and those they have a one- to two-hour response time. Other calls such as stray dogs, bites where the animal's quarantined, or calls regarding licensing or lease law violations are priority 3s and 4s, which per contract have a five- to six-hour response time. If it's after hours, there won't be a response till the following day. So that's sort of the current state and where we're at. In looking at other agencies... So Peoria has five full-time animal control officers, Surprise has four, Avondale, closest in size to us, has two, and they also cross-trained three of their park rangers to handle calls after hours. So what you'll find is that all agencies do animal control a little different. Some of them do less, some of them do more. But all the agencies pretty much have four things in common. Personnel costs, and we did some very quick approximate calculations. $76,000 is mid-range salary level, benefits, uniforms, and training. So we calculated three officers for our city, so basically it's that number times 3. Vehicle cost, a vehicle with air-conditioned animal storage is about $66,000. That would be times 2. Facilities and equipment, we would need a facility that we could either build kennels or house temporary kennels. We had not figured out a cost for that at that time. It would just depend on what exactly we would need. Also, there's one-time purchase of equipment, such as things like leashes, microchip readers, poles, traps, would be about $5,000 annually. So other considerations, which we haven't calculated in these figures, are things such as emergency vet services and administrative or clerical support. In addition, if we did have our own program, we'd still need to contract with the animal control and the Humane Society, but maybe on a reduced level. So a very rough estimate is probably sometime somewhere in the neighborhood of $200,000 to $243,000 annually with a one-time startup cost of about $150,000. So staff's recommendation would be to continue the current level of service, which is about half the cost. But if council would like a more thorough presentation on exact costs and exact services, we'd be more than happy to do that, maybe later in the year in preparation for next year's budget.
Thank you, Chief. Well, let's do a motion in a second, and then you can ask questions and discuss it. So could I have a motion for number 4 to approve the First Amendment to the agreement for the basic animal control services between Maricopa County and City of Goodyear? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion from Councilman Lortano, a second from Councilman Hampton. Roll call vote, well, discussion, sorry about that. Discussion, yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Chief. My question was to get the information out to the public, who may not just be reading the packet, because there were some questions, why don't we have our, basically our own Humane Society, our own personnel doing this? And I think you highlighted very well what the costs and what the savings are to the city. So I do appreciate, and I hope that gives the information to those people that were asking for it. So I support your recommendation.
Any other comments, Councilman?
I think that the Maricopa County Animal Care Control and the Humane Society certainly have the skills and the ability to best effectively do it. Now, if there was an increase in our contract, would they provide additional service or service hours?
As we go forward, they have already programmed a contract increase. It's 3% for the next several years. I don't think there's any change in their operating hours. I think that's probably set.
Okay, thank you.
No other comments? All right, can we vote on this? All in, roll call fee? No, I don't have to?
Okay.
Just all in favor? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? The ayes have it. Thank you, Chief. That was great information. I think some of us didn't know some of that, so very good. Okay, then let's go on to the next one, which is 13. And Javier, you're going to make the presentation?
Mayor and Council, thank you for the opportunity of presenting this item to you. It's actually, just wanted to share with you that there are times when effluent from the water reclamation facility in Goodyear needs to discharge some water to the river due to some pressure spikes. These are really the minimis amount of water. Most of our water, of course, is recharged. Adding another area where we can discharge, in this case, the Buckeye Irrigation Canal, gives us some great operational flexibility. There are times where we are challenged to meet some regulatory requirements, and discharging to the canal allows us to meet those requirements. Additionally, I also wanted to share with you that this is a temporary situation. There are some improvements taking place at the Goodyear Water Reclamation Facility that will essentially eliminate our need to discharge except for some emergencies or maintenance. But in our negotiations, we found the need to make some minor changes to the agreement as late as this morning, and we wanted to share those changes with you because you didn't get a chance to see them. So Gretchen has those details.
Good.
Mayor, Lord, and Council, we made two minor changes this morning to the agreement at the district's request. The first one was in Section 5 under discharge. They requested that we add language that they would be allowed to refuse the city's discharge in the case of emergency, such as monsoons filled up the canal, and there was no space for our discharge, or if they were in their dry-up period, which is when they do their maintenance. The other change we made was to Section 14B, the termination for cause. There was some remnant language in there that would allow us to recoup costs incurred if the district were the defaulting party. Well, we will not be paying them anything for this, so there will not be any cost to recoup, so. And those were the only two. So we do, staff does recommend that you, council authorized the city manager to execute the affluent discharge agreement between the City of Goodyear and the Buckeye Water Conservation Irrigation and Drainage District.
Thank you very much. Then Vice Mayor, I'm going to ask you to make that motion.
So moved.
All right, a motion made by Vice Mayor Stiff, and a second?
Second.
A second by Councilmember Kano. Any discussion? All right, thank you for the explanation. It was very clear. I greatly appreciate it. So we can all in favor this? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. All right, let's go on to the business. I'd like to remind council to wait for a motion and a second before discussion. So the first item in business is a public hearing to consider a request to use a permit for a convenient storage, also known as a mini-storage. So I'm going to open the public hearing. Well, hello there. I have Katie Wilken, planner, will be presenting. Katie?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. As you stated, this is a request for a use permit to allow a mini-storage facility along Montevista Road and Pebble Creek Parkway. This is a nine-and-a-half acre parcel. It's located in the Goodyear Plan Regional Center PAD District, and it's designated as mixed-use commercial in the PAD. The PAD has a specific permitted use list and development standards that development must follow, and mini-storage is listed as a use that requires a use permit. The subject property is outlined in red on the conceptual site plan here that's on this slide. But I highlighted in blue, this is the area in general where the storage facility is proposed to be developed. As you can see, less than half of the property is being developed at this time. The front port, and that would be developed for a mini-storage indoor facility. It's about 112,000 square feet. It's a two-story building, about 34 feet tall. It will allow for 850 storage units, and it does have a loading dock that's internal in between, in the middle of the two buildings. And then the front portion of the site could be developed in accordance with those mixed-use development commercial standards, which allows a variety of commercial, office, retail-type uses, similar to most commercial parcels in that front portion of the site. Things to note, there are two stipulations proposed on the use permit. One is that the storage of RVs, trailers, boats, and similar vehicles are not permitted at the site. The second is that the rental of moving trucks, vans, and similar type of vehicles would not be permitted at the site. We also have a stipulation that's quite normal, that development has to be in conformance with the site plan, and the site plan doesn't show any outdoor uses, outdoor storage. And so therefore, none of those uses that sometimes come with storage facilities would not be permitted at this location. The site plan also included a conceptual site plan. There is a stipulation requiring that the building be set back 50 feet from the north property line. To the north of this site is the Live Goodyear Apartment Complex. There's also a 30-foot landscape setback required along that north property line to provide setback from that residential development to the north. Elevations were provided, and stipulations require conformance with the building elevations that were submitted with the use permit as well. The top elevation shown on this slide is what would face the Live Goodyear property. The bottom elevation on this slide is what would face the Bullard Wash. The top elevation on this slide is what would face Montevista. The top elevation on this slide is what would face Montevista Parkway, but again, there is kind of developable land between that elevation and Montevista Drive. And then the west elevation is what would face the RID Canal to the west. Because there was no single-family residential within the notice area, an alternative notice was used. The site was posted and notices were mailed, but we did not hold a neighborhood meeting. At the Planning and Zoning Commission, two residents did attend and oppose the use. Staff has found that the proposal does meet our codes and ordinances, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval by a five-to-one vote. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing.
Mayor, we have speaker cards. Pardon me? We have speaker cards.
Yes, I'm going to ask for them now. Do I have, then the speaker? All right, I'm sorry. Do you have speaker cards?
Yes, Mayor, also I have one for the applicant. The applicant?
All right.
David Reichert?
I think you know the process. If you have three minutes to speak, the yellow light will let you know when you have 20 seconds.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. I will be very brief. We agree with the staff recommendation. The planning commission has been very generous in their five-to-one vote. And for the record, just so that it is there, the criteria that the use permit requires, we think we meet. It's a very low-intensity use. Yes, they're hard to place sometimes, but this use is all done with indoors. There will be no traffic generation beyond the minimum to service the site. We think they'll have similar operating hours to what the businesses adjacent to it will have, so there will not be any after-hours, people coming in that particular area and doing things that people wouldn't want them to be doing. We agree with the stipulations that the staff had put forward, and we think that we will be developing one of the most high-quality uses of this nature in your community. And we ask your indulgence in making a recommendation and then approving this for us. We will be under construction shortly after we get through the development process. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speaker cards?
Yes, Mayor, Michael Sanders.
I think what you heard said before about the timing?
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, Mayor Lord, council. I have a brief, prepared comment I'd like to make for you.
Would you please, even though she announced your name, you announce your name, please.
You betcha. My name is Michael Sanders. I live here in Goodyear, been here for several years now. My comments are directed specifically towards this proposed multi-unit enclosed self-storage facility on the northeast corner of Pebble Creek and Montevista. It's across the street from the Calrose Store, which I'm sure you're all aware of. We, several of us from three different housing areas in the local area, attended the most recent Goodyear Planning Commission where this construction item was referred to the city council for approval after the hearing. Specifically Palm Valley Phase Eight North, which is where I live, we are directly west of that area, Phase Eight South, which is in the southwest corner of that area, and Rio Paseo, which is on the northeast side of it. All were there for that, for that meeting. During this planning meeting, there were eight construction items on the agenda. All of them were proudly touted by the city as having no comments for residents against the moving forward with construction. Interestingly enough, the city had public signs posted, notices sent out, and held public meetings for local residents for seven of the eight items that were on the agenda. Obviously, the self-storage units were not on those seven that were advertised, other than the sign that was outside. We did see that the sign, the, two days before this planning commission, thank goodness, we have a very good, very active block watch, and one of our block watch people spotted the sign, so we were able to at least get somebody there. We realized that the city has a requirement of 500 feet within the area. Okay, we live 1,000 feet outside. All three of our areas are 1,000 feet outside of that. There's no reason to build an industrial storage facility in this location in the midst of these housing areas. We believe it will increase our crime rate, and these facilities are magnets for criminal activity and will detract from the appeal of this area. We've been told by the city that these areas were zoned for commercial retail, which we believe will directly add to the value of our homes. We do not believe storage facilities will add and will in fact attract from our property values. We need more restaurants and upscale retail stores, not storage facilities with 24-hour traffic and added criminal activity. There are many industrial areas in Goodyear where this type of facility would fit nicely. We please disapprove this project in this location. We're not fighting this project, just not right there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anybody else in the audience like to speak?
Mayor, I have another card for Molly Stockley.
Say the name again, please.
Molly Stockley. It was actually, she does not wish to speak, but she does oppose the staff recommendation.
All right. She what? I think she agrees.
Did not wish to speak, but opposes the recommendation.
But she opposes it. She does not want to speak, but she opposes it. Okay, so we're all done with that, so I will close the public hearing. Can I have a motion and a second to approve the request for the use permit for the mini-storage with stipulation? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
I heard a motion from Councilman Campbell, a second?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Kano, open for council discussion. Council, Vice Mayor Stiff?
I'm not sure who to ask this question of, so I'm just going to ask the question then, whoever's just standing. The, each of these units are rented. Do the, are they paid, do they pay the rental tax fee on those pieces of property?
I believe that this is a transaction base, so there would be a tax associated with it. I can check to verify and I will get back to council on that, but I'm fairly certain the answer is yes.
I believe that to be so as well. I just wanted some verification. The second question that I had was related to the special use permit and our ability to decline it. So I'd ask the city attorney to remind council what, under what parameters are we allowed to decline a special use permit request?
Madam Mayor and council, you're asking for legal advice, which is probably more appropriately delivered in an executive session.
Yes.
I think it's important for the public to know what we, what kind of thing, what guidance do we, do we typically get on a use permit? There's a couple of things we can't, that we can't do. Is there some way we can talk about without actually getting legal advice?
The council action report spells out the two criteria listed in the city zoning code that council should consider in your approval process of a use permit. This is a quasi-administrative review since the underlying zoning has already been approved, which is where this council has the most discretion in making decisions as far as land use. That is the general parameters according to the code as listed in the car.
For those that didn't read the car, and that's who I'm looking at is some folks in the audience who haven't read that, that's kind of what I'm looking for is...
And I can read the two criteria.
I know what it is, but they don't, so that's what I'm driving at.
Understood. And the two criteria listed in the, out of our zoning code is, one, the use permit will not materially be detrimental to persons residing or working in a vicinity adjacent to the property, to the neighborhood, or to the public welfare. And the second criteria listed in our zoning code is the proposed use is reasonably compatible with uses in the surrounding area.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Councilman Hampton?
So maybe Katie can refresh me. So how far is it from Live? You got 50 foot, and then you got 30 foot on top of that?
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmember Hampton. The property is adjacent to the Live Goodyear property.
Can you put it back on the, don't we have a diagram of that?
Yes, I do have the slide.
It's just hard to see Live.
Can we put it up?
Because it wasn't in the actual satellite image.
So the Live Goodyear is not shown on this aerial, but the subject property is adjacent. They share a border, so just north of the subject property is the Live Goodyear property. And it's a little easier to see here. So there, per the stipulations that are before you, the building would need to be set back 50 feet from the property line. And the landscaping, there would be required a 30-foot landscape buffer. That's not under the current commercial standards in the Goodyear Planned Regional Center. That's something that was worked through with the applicant specific for this proposal so that this property was consistent with the residential use to the north.
And is it, so it's a total of 50 feet?
50-foot building setback, yes.
To the, to the Live sign. And the other question I had, is it, is it truly only during operation? This might be for someone else. Is the use...
Can you talk into the microphone?
Is the use only for the standard business hours, or is it 24-hour operation? Can a res, can a person who rents it, I assume they can, can they, can they use it for 24 hours?
Thank you.
Is there any rules for that?
There is no stipulation that limits the hours of operation. The applicant could tell you more about how this business works, but I can tell you that there's, there's nothing that is limiting the hours of operation.
Okay. I think he wants to say something, but I don't know if, can he come up?
Finished?
I was, can he answer that question or not?
Mayor and members of council, to answer your question, the hours of operation by this owner are six in the morning till 10:00 in the evening, and they don't allow activity beyond that timeframe just because of the issues that someone could be there, hidden within the depths of the building, doing things they shouldn't be doing. The office closes earlier, and then there's an automatic system that shuts it down at 10 o'clock. So this is a very sophisticated developer of these types of facilities, and he's been approved most everywhere he goes because of these extra activities. So hopefully that answers your question.
Thank you.
I had one more for KB potentially, or for you as well. So the use, we're changing the zoning, we're changing the use for that area, and it's gonna, this will be in the far back. Now, in the front, can the use be, can it be more storage facility in front there? Or is it only for retail and different type of use?
Thank you, councilmember.
The frontage, the frontage road, the rest, the remainder of the balance of the, of the actual property?
Because we stipulated that the site had to be developed in conformance with the site plan, and the site plan is only showing this one building, if they wanted to, say, build another building, they would have to go through this process once again because that would not be complying with the site plan that was submitted.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Kano?
I did have a question also about it being in the Goodyear Planned Regional Center, which seemed to be a bit of a surprise, but then did find out that it was, as you stated, Katie, one of the allowable uses of the property. I did drive the property. I had, did watch the planning and zoning meeting, and the project is tucked away up by, by Live and on the west side is kind of behind that commercial area that's already there. One of my concerns is how it faces Bullard, the Bullard Wash, and whether or not there's any fencing around the property to maybe even be a visual impairment to the Bullard Wash or access, or how, how that security would work.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmember Kano. There is a stipulation with the use permit that a block wall could not be built along that east property line, along the Bullard Wash, so that, just as you say, so that visual impact to the Bullard Wash, also for a safety concern, so someone couldn't say hide behind the block wall with the trails there. That means they could build like a wrought iron fence, so if they have any security concerns and want to fence their property, they still can. They just couldn't do so with a solid block wall.
Would they have to get approval to build a fence?
They would go through our site plan and design review, but it would not need to come through the city council for approval.
I do appreciate the extensive landscaping, and then once it's mature, I think it would be a good, a good buffer for that property. I think they put some effort into minimizing its impact, its visual impact. Thank you.
Any other comments? Well, this always puts us in quite a dilemma, doesn't it? Because people do buy their homes around these certain areas and their expectations are high. And I think it was generated even more so when Maestris is going to settle in that area and develop. So under the guidelines, they list a number, which I gather we weren't to discuss here tonight, but I won't say what, but there are a number of businesses that may develop there. And this is one of them. So it's on the list, so it's very difficult for us to handle. I do like the landscaping, and I certainly hope that your description of the action and activity that takes place there is exactly the way it will be and that there isn't any loopholes where that could change in any way. And I don't, I'm not saying this disrespectfully, I'm just saying it because there are people concerned that live in the neighborhood. And I understand, and it's always the most difficult, and I say this time after time to people, when there's land space, land empty that's not developed yet, even though it's, you know, it's zoned at that time, can be changed as the time goes by. We would love to have had the entire area with retail. We would love to look like all the other shopping centers. We've tried, tried and tried, and it isn't going to happen. And so we're readjusting our, our viewpoint on what probably will come to that land area. So I respect that you took the opportunity to speak publicly in planning and zoning and that you're here. So our council will have to, I have no idea how this is going, vote's going to go, but I do want a roll call vote. Pardon me?
It just needs to be all in favor or all opposed?
But one if I want a roll call vote?
You can have a roll call vote if you want a roll call.
That's what I want, okay? Because I feel the people that, that really are against this are going to have to say, you know, I, I think if we could cut ourselves in half, we'd be on both sides. So it's very difficult. So anyway, so I'm calling for a roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Stiff?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Kano?
Aye.
Councilmember Lortano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Thank you very much. All right, let's go to 15. Public hearing to consider a rezone, eight acres from the General Commercial C2 zoning district to the multifamily MF-24 district planned area development, PAD overlay. Public hearing is opening. Alex Latinsky, planner two, presenting. Alex?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. This first rezone before each night is the Sparrow rezone. The request is to rezone approximately eight acres from C2 General Commercial to multifamily MF24, creating a, or what we call the Sparrow MF24 PAD overlay. The property is located south of the southeast corner of McDowell Road and 145th Avenue. So to the north... To the north is the Palm Place Plaza Office Complex, Zone C2. To the east is a vacant lot, zoned I, Light Industrial, which is part of, currently owned by McLean Distribution Center. To the south is vacant property that's owned by the city and then Interstate 10. To the west is currently vacant land zone for future commercial uses as part of the Centerscape PAD. Within the general plan, the property is designated business and commerce and is included in the Transit Oriented Development TOD overlay. That overlay encourages higher density and intensity residential uses, as well as emphasizes pedestrian-oriented development and encourages mixed use as well and interaction with commercial centers. Got a little behind on my slides. So some of you may recall the PB Bell rezoning that took place in September of 2018. That's the property just east of Harley Davidson. We had a similar situation on adding on stipulations to ensure that density standards are being met in order to fit with the standards of the general plan. So for the maximum building height, the PAD requests 50 feet, which is a 10-foot increase from the MF24 district. And then something to note here is that the C2 district does currently... And then something to note here is that the C2 district does currently allow for fifty-six feet. So it's technically a six-foot reduction from what's already permitted. There is also a request for increased, increased height on the accessory building from twelve feet to sixteen feet. The side and rear setbacks, which for this property, we've identified as the north as the side, which is adjacent to that Palm Place Plaza. And to the east as the rear setback, which is adjacent to the I-1 property. They would currently require twenty feet to the north, and then a twenty, twenty percent portion of the lot depth to the east. So the PAD here requests a ten-foot setback to accessory structures, so garages, and then fifty feet to actual residential structure occupancy. There's also a request to reduce the parking standards on this property. This is based on the fact that the site is proposed as age-restricted, and there will likely be less vehicles on site. The project narrative does include some existing examples of where this request has been successful. Staff has included a stipulation that requires the city's current parking requirements if the property does not develop as age-restricted. There's some additional stipulations that staff has proposed to maintain the city's general plan and requirements. So like we've seen with the PB Bell product, or project, there is a stipulation of a minimum number of units, which is currently capped at one hundred and seventy-five. And that just helps maintain a higher density to further those general plan standards. That way, if the developer does send, or the current property owner sells the property, the next developer would have to develop as a higher-density product. To promote connectivity in the TOD and business commerce general plan overlay, there was a stipulation that requires pedestrian paths to the west and to the south for future development connections. In addition to the age restriction stipulation, the applicant has identified that a loss of parking spaces does allow for the development of additional amenities. So a stipulation was included to require a pool and clubhouse, along with additional amenities identified in the narrative. And finally, there's a stipulation about the setbacks for buildings for residential occupancy. So commercial and industrial developments do have an additional setback, requirement for property adjacent to multifamily projects. Since the commercial property is already built, and the industrial property is already zoned, staff worked with the applicant to ensure that Sparrow's site does, includes additional setbacks on its own property in order to prevent restrictions on the development standards of the adjacent properties. This is the conceptual site plan for the property. So we can see this is the main building in the center, surrounded by parking, just in order to meet those additional setbacks. Some elevations that the applicant provided were included in the project narrative. The project will go through a site plan and design review process, and is required to meet the city's design guidelines. Since there are no residents within five hundred feet of the property, and our alternative citizen review process was utilized, notice was sent out to adjacent property owners. There have been no objections to the rezoning received to date. No one from the public attended the, or spoke against the rezoning at the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing on June 12th. At that meeting, the commission did recommend approval unanimously for the rezoning. This concludes my presentation. The applicant is available for questions or presentation as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. I, I see in the audience Ed Bull, representative of the Capital Partners. Somebody like to speak?
Good evening, mayor, members of the council. Ed Bull, seven oh two East Osborne, here on behalf of the proposed developer. I would like to speak only if you need me to speak. We are very pleased with staff's recommendation for approval and the planning commission's unanimous recommendation for approval. And the fourteen stipulations are perfectly acceptable to us. So if you're comfortable with those representations and recommendations and stipulations, we're in good shape with that. If you're in good shape, so are we. If you want a presentation, I'll give one, otherwise I'll be quiet.
Thank you, Mr. Bull. All right, are there any speaker cards?
No, mayor.
All right. I'm going to close the public hearing. Will the city clerk please read resolution number twenty nineteen dash nineteen seventy-three by title only?
Adopt resolution number twenty nineteen dash nineteen seventy-three, declaring as public records those certain documents filed with the city clerk titled Official Supplementary Zoning Map nineteen dash zero four, Sparrow Development Legal Description and Sparrow Partners MF dash twenty-four with PAD overlay development regulations, February fourteenth, twenty nineteen.
Thank you. Can I have a motion a second to approve resolution twenty nineteen dash nineteen seventy-three? Do I hear the motion? I heard, I heard a motion by Vice Mayor Stiff, and a second by Councilman Lortano. Open for discussion, any discussion? Councilman Campbell?
I have a question regarding the plans. Is this going to be rental properties? And is this, or assisted living? I mean, what's, what's the, what is the final outcome that you're trying to do? And I see it's multifamily, and it's going to be fifty-five plus.
Mayor, may I?
Yes.
Thank you. Yes, it's a fifty-five and above rental community. We do not provide assisted living. We do not provide memory care. We do not provide higher levels of care. It is fifty-five and up independent living.
Okay, thank you very much. Yes, vice mayor?
I'm not sure this is a question as much as a statement. I'm concerned about the reduction in parking spaces. I currently live in a multifamily development, and parking is our greatest nightmare. They're never close enough to where, where we live. Our guests struggle continually for places to park. And I think we're perhaps choosing, because it's fifty-five and older, to allow reduced parking with the anticipation that there won't be two cars in the family, so to speak. And I don't know that that's a logical assumption. And we're reducing this by quite a number of parking places. So help, help me with that.
Okay. Mayor, vice mayor. The proposed developer is in this niche business. They have provided in information materials, a number of parking ratios at similar kinds of developments that they or others have developed. And that ratio hovers right around one point three five. It varies down some, varies up some. But that's worked very well. Part of the reason that it's probably worked very well is because it's fifty-five and up. Part of the reason is about two-thirds of our units are, will be ones, one-bedroom units. Most of our residents are retired or semi-retired. So it's not, you know, two cars needing to, to go to work and that type of thing. It's also really based upon Sparrow Development's experience at other developments that they have for the resident profile that they attract. They too, Sparrow too, knows that residents need parking. They are confident that the one point three five will be adequate and appropriate based upon their experience. And they know that we can do better things with that acreage through amenities and other feet, setbacks and other features, rather than simply a parking lot. So this is Sparrow's niche. They've studied it. They've provided information and examples. We would request the council's approval of this development with that parking ratio.
Thank you for the explanation.
Thank you, Mr. Bull. Any other questions? All right. Then let's have a roll call vote, please. Vice Mayor Stiff?
Yeah.
She's not real. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see that you had one more question.
And so make sure, this might be for, for staff. But so if it, it's already zoned for multifamily, are we, are we doing it for multifamily, right? Is that true?
You're asking me?
Yeah.
Well, Alex.
He's looking at me.
We might have the answer too.
Mayor, if I may. Councilmember Hampton, the, the property is on C2 commercial. I apologize if I didn't, if I didn't make that clear. The whole property, the Palm Place Plaza, and that property is all zoned C2 general commercial. The rezone is for multifamily with a PAD overlay.
Okay, that's, I, I was getting confused with some of the other ones. So I, I thought there was a complete change. So once we do change, and for some reason a Sparrow backed out, for whatever reason, it would still, could be a multifamily spot after this.
It would, yes, it would still be zoned for multifamily.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I got you. All right, let's roll call vote, please. Vice Mayor Stiff?
Aye.
Councilmember Kano?
Aye.
Councilmember Lortano stepped out. Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries. Thank you. So will the city clerk please read ordinance number twenty nineteen dash fourteen thirty-six by title only, please?
Adopt ordinance number twenty nineteen dash fourteen thirty-six, rezoning approximately eight acres of land located south of the southeast corner of McDowell Road and one hundred and forty-fifth Avenue from general commercial C2 to MF twenty-four with a planned area development PAD overlay, Sparrow Partners dash MF dash twenty-four with PAD overlay, amending the zoning map of the city of Goodyear, providing for non-abridgement corrections and severability, providing for an effective date, and providing for penalties.
Thank you. Can I have a motion a second to approve ordinance twenty nineteen dash fourteen thirty-six? Do I hear that motion? So moved. Second?
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilman Campbell, and a second by Councilman Hampton. Yes, it was you. Open for council discussion. No discussion, roll call vote, please. Vice Mayor Stiff?
Aye.
Councilmember Lortano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Kano?
Aye.
Councilmember Pazillo is not here. Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, let's go to the next item. It's a public hearing to consider a request to rezone Australian parcel twelve point three six. Open the public hearing. Alex, you're on again.
Thank you, mayor. Parcel twelve point three six is located in Australia Mountain Ranch. It is at the, is northeast of the intersection of Australia Parkway and San Miguel. So to the west, you'll see parcel three point one four, where Pinnacle West is currently developing. The property is currently zoned commercial under the Australia Phase One PAD, which was adopted in nineteen eighty-seven. To the south is property that's currently zoned for a junior high school. And then further south is the high school. The applicant is requesting that this property be rezoned to single-family residential. The development standards have been designed in a PAD format in order to remain consistent with the existing single-family residential development standards within the Australia Phase One PAD. So like, if you're familiar with the Pinnacle West property, those are the standards that will be reflected in this twelve point three six standard. Or twelve point three six PAD. Those nineteen eighty, nineteen eighty-seven standards are being carried over. Since the PAD is a large book and outdated, staff worked with the applicant to create a two-page PAD book that will be helpful for this, for staff, the applicant, and future residents. The proposed lot sizes. The proposed lot sizes for this property are, is a reduction of what's allowed in the R1, in the city's R1 six development standards. So in keeping with the requirements for additional amenities, the PAD includes the requirement for an extra design enhancement, as included in the zoning ordinance. There was a citizen review meeting held on May fifteenth at Star Point Residence Club. There was one resident who attended this meeting. He was just curious about the project and did not express opposition. Staff does find out the applicant has met the requirements of rezoning, and believes that the applicant has made the case that Australia currently does have existing commercial areas that will support the community, therefore does not oppose rezoning from commercial to residential. Planning and Zoning Commission heard the item and recommended approval on June 12th. That was a vote six to zero. This concludes my presentation. Pete Tyke is here as well, and can answer any questions if you have. Thank you.
Thank you, just, Mr. Tyke, want to speak?
Good evening, mayor and council members. All I wanted to reiterate was what Alex said expressed. First, I should drop and say, when the resident did speak, he, he said something to the effect of, "I have no opposition to this, and Newland does an awesome job." So just reiterating what Alex said. We have so much commercial out there between Mountain Ranch Marketplace. There's another thirty thousand square foot that hasn't been developed across the street. We've got fourteen acres. So all I'm doing is reiterating that we don't really need the commercial in this particular area. But of course, we'll have it further south.
Thank you very much. Are there any speaker cards?
No, mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? All right, then I'm going to close the public hearing. And will the city clerk please read resolution number twenty nineteen dash nineteen sixty-eight by title only?
Adopt resolution number twenty nineteen dash nineteen sixty-eight, declaring as public records those certain documents filed with the city clerk entitled Supplementary Zoning Map number nineteen dash zero one, parcel twelve point three six legal description, and Australia parcel twelve point three six regulatory standards book, April twenty nineteen.
Thank you. Can I have a motion a second to approve resolution twenty nineteen dash nineteen sixty-eight? Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
I heard a motion by Councilman Kano, and a second by Councilman Campbell. Open for council discussion. No discussion, roll call vote, please. Vice Mayor Stiff?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Kano?
Aye.
Councilmember Lortano?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries. All right, will the city clerk please read ordinance number twenty nineteen dash fourteen thirty-four by title only?
Adopt ordinance number twenty nineteen dash fourteen thirty-four, conditionally rezoning parcel twelve point three six in Australia Phase One, generally located at the northeast corner of South Australia Parkway and West San Miguel Avenue, from PAD commercial comm to the Australia parcel twelve point three six PAD, designating the property for single-family residential use, adopting the supplementary zoning map number nineteen dash zero one to provide for the amendment of the planned area development, amending the zoning map of the city of Goodyear, providing for non-abridgement, providing for corrections, providing for severability, providing for an effective date, and providing for penalties.
Thank you. Can I have a motion a second to approve ordinance twenty nineteen dash fourteen thirty-four? Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
I heard a motion by Councilman Hampton. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I heard a second by Vice Mayor Stiff. So open for council discussion. Roll call then. Vice Mayor Stiff?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Member Kano?
Aye.
Councilmember Lortano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries. Well, let's go to seventeen. The next item in business is a public hearing to consider a request to amend the Lucero Plan Area Development PAD. Open the public hearing. Alex?
Last one for me. This PAD should not be unfamiliar to the council. Lucero is the approximate six hundred, six hundred and seventeen-acre PAD located at the entry of Australia, around the Star Tower. They're currently selling lots, and the models are open. The PAD already has the property zone for a mix of residential densities and the commercial property zone behind the Star Tower. In twenty, in November of twenty eighteen, the PAD was amended to change the side and front yard, or front yard setbacks to four parcels. That was A1, A2, I1, and I2. It allowed the side setback on A1 and A2 to be reduced to five feet instead of six feet. And then allowed parcels I1 and I2 to have a front yard setback of ten feet to livable space. So that was the extra room for casitas and extra bedrooms to be at the front of the house. The main purpose of this amendment is to apply those two setback updates to the rest of the parcels within Lucero. Additionally, after months of having the Lucero PAD book put to use, staff, together with Newland, has reformatted the book to make it easier to use. And it includes a development standards table, and removes all unnecessary references to past versions. Other than that, there's no other standards that are changing. So for this amendment, we did hold a neighborhood meeting on May twenty-ninth at the Australia Welcome Center. There were two residents from the adjacent Custom Home Parcel who attended this meeting. They did have general inquiries about the scope of the amendment. They expressed some concerns about the traffic capacity on Australia Parkway, but did understand that the update did not make any changes to the maximum dwelling units in Lucero. We did find that the PAD- We did find that the PAD amendment was consistent with the requirements of the zoning ordinance. Um, and Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend the item on June 12th as well. This concludes my presentation and once again, I can answer any questions and Pete can as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Well, I'll just throw it out, but after that last remark, I'm not sure Mr. Tyke has anything to say, but Mr. Tyke, you have the microphone if you'd like. Thank you very much. Alright, are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Alright, then let's, uh, with the audi- oh, excuse me. Is there anybody in the audience that'd like to speak? I'm going to close the public hearing. Will the city clerk please read resolution number 2019-1972 by title only?
Adopt resolution number 2019-1972, declaring as public records those certain documents filed with the city clerk entitled supplementary zoning map number 19 dash 03A, Lucero legal description and Lucero Planned Area Development Regulatory Booklet, April 17, 2019.
Can I have a motion a second to approve resolution 2019-1972? Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Second. I heard a motion by, uh, council, I keep wanting to say vice, don't I?
I was vice last week.
Campbell and councilmember Loretano, open for council discussion. Councilman?
I agree with Mr. Tyker. Whatever Newland builds, it's awesome and Lucero is gorgeous. So, you've done a wonderful job, Pete.
Any other comments? Alright, let's do a roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Cano?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Will the city clerk please read ordinance number 2019-1435 by title only?
Adopt ordinance number 2019-1435, conditionally rezoning the property within the Lucero Final Planned Area Development, consisting of approximately 617 acres, generally located on the west side of Australia Parkway, south of the Australia Star Tower to the intersection of Australia Parkway and Cotton Lane. By adopting the Lucero Final Plan PAD dated April 2019, amending the zoning map of the city of Goodyear, providing for non-abridgement, providing for corrections, providing for severability, providing for an effective date and providing for penalties.
Thank you. Can I have a motion a second to approve ordinance 2019-1435? Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Alright, I heard a motion by councilman Hampton and a second by councilman Cano. Open for council discussion. Alright, roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cano?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
The next item, as 18, is a public hearing to consider a request for the use permit, permit for convenience use specifically a Sonic drive-through restaurant. Open the public hearing. Katie Wilken, Planning Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. The subject property is a 1.2 acre parcel located in the Centerra Crossing PAD located at Australia Parkway and Van Buren Street. Um, the specific parcel is located south of the new building that houses the Dunkin' Donuts drive-through. As you can see from this aerial, there is one vacant parcel between the subject property and that building that just went up. The proposal is to develop a Sonic drive-through restaurant. Uh, convenience use, which is, um, defined as a drive-through, does require use permit, which is why it is before you this evening. Um, they did submit a site plan with the proposal and development must be in, um, conformance with the site plan. It is a typical Sonic, um, that it has the drive-in spaces, but this one also has a drive-through facility, as you can see depicted on the site plan. Building elevations were also submitted with the use permit. Um, the majority of the materials and colors do match that of the greater center, but as you can see, they do have some of their, um, corporate colors and materials, um, developed into the building elevations as well. A neighborhood meeting was held on April 29th, 2019. Um, between the neighborhood meeting and the other, um, notifications that went out, there have been no objections received by any of the property owners within the area. It was found to meet codes and ordinances. There are no objections and Planning and Zoning Commission recommends approval. That concludes my presentation.
Uh, I see the applicant, uh, Stefani is here. It's Stephanie. It's Stephanie, isn't it?
Yes, my name's Stephanie Rowe, uh, mayor, vice mayor, councilmembers, staff. I don't have anything to add to staff's presentation. They've done an excellent job and we've been working with them to make sure we meet all the requirements, but I will answer any questions that you have.
Well, thank you very much. Are there any other speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Anybody in the audience like to speak? Alright, then I'm going to close the public hearing. Can I have a motion a second to approve the use permit for the convenience use with stipulation? Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Second. I heard a motion by, uh, councilman Hampton and a second by, uh, councilman, uh, Campbell. Open for council discussion. No discussion. Let's vote on it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Ayes have it. Welcome.
Welcome.
We look forward to seeing your, your building. I just have a little quick story. I think that's the first place Ron and I went. We come to the city, went out to the base. We're at the base and we came around and stopped there. And I had never seen such a creative menu before and, uh, we had a fun time.
The only place you can get tater tots.
Yeah, it's, it's just amazing. Yeah, so, we're pleased to have you. Alright, well, let's. Thank you. Okay. I just talk so much now, I'm, I'm, I said, we're on number 19, right?
Aye.
And we polled that, uh, but I do want you to know it was a public hearing advertised for June 24th, 2019 to consider the approval of a use permit for a public utility facility, well-numbered 26 in the Bullard Wash at Centerra, was withdrawn from the agenda and be, will be re-advertised for consideration in a future regular council meeting. So, we'll go on to 20 and that is a public hearing to consider a request, consider a rezon, um, to the Hillstone Residences at Canyon Trails PAD. Open public hearing, Katie Wilken. You've been up many times tonight, Katie. You're doing a great job. Alright, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. This proposal is for the Hillstone Residences at Canyon Trails Planned Area Development. The subject property is approximately 22 acres. It's located at the northwest corner of Yuma and, um, 173rd. It's just west of Cotton Lane. This aerial isn't blown out, but this parcel here is adjacent to Cotton Lane Future Loop 303. And then there's the subject property. The current zoning on the property is Canyon Trails Phase 2 PAD and the subject property is designated for court home development. It is proposed for single-family rental, um, which we've seen, we, we, at the city of Goodyear have been calling single-family rental. Um, this proposal refers to that as cottage neighborhood. The proposal includes 240 dwelling units, a variety of one, two and three-bedroom homes, all one-story. It generally follows the city's MF18 multifamily, um, 18 zoning district, but does have a few modifications um, to allow for the single-family rental product. There was not a conceptual site plan included with this zoning. We don't necessarily require that. However, a site plan has been submitted and so I have, um, included that so you can see the development is similar to the other single-family rental projects we have seen throughout the city. Oh, I'm sorry. This was from the Planning and Zoning Commission. We had to modify the stip. It was already included. I apologize for not updating that slide. The neighborhood meeting was held on April 30th and there have been no objections received to this request. It has been found in conformance with the general plan and the review criteria for zoning applications. As I've said, we've received no objections and the staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval of the rezoning request. I'd be happy to take your questions and the applicant is also here.
Just one question. Does the applicant want to speak in the audience? I think David McGuire is here. Hello, Mr. McGuire.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Uh, happy to answer any questions. We are in agreement with staff. We appreciate their help. Uh, we're excited about this project and ready to move forward. So, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Great, thank you very much. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Okay. So, let's, uh, close this public hearing and will the city clerk please read resolution number 2019-1976 by title only?
Adopt resolution 2019-1976, declaring as public records those certain documents filed with the city clerk entitled official supplementary zoning map number 19 dash 01A, legal description and Hillstone Residences at Canyon Trails Final Pad Development Regulations dated February 1st, 2019.
Thank you. Can I have a motion a second to approve resolution 2019-1976?
So moved.
I heard a motion by councilman Campbell. Do I hear a second?
Second. Second.
Lost your, the vice mayor lost his voice. Second by the vice mayor. Open for council discussion?
I have a question.
Yes, councilman Campbell.
I have a question, please, of Mr. McGuire. Who is the actual builder of the residences? Is it Hillstone Homes?
Hillstone Homes is the builder, yes.
They're wonderful. My son just went through the purchase process with them at 22nd and Greenway and they are a wonderful builder. We're so happy that you're coming to Goodyear. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Alright, any other, yes, councilman Hampton?
I'm just trying to visually, uh, understand what it looks like. Is it going to look more like? I, I like the models and everything. Is it going to look visually like?
I get close to that microphone.
Visually like, I don't know how to compare a competitor, but like the Christopher Todd or like the buildings, is it a villa behind Dunkin' Donuts?
Well, um,
I don't know if that's a-
You want to just understand the architecture itself or the site planning part of it?
Yeah, just the density, because one of them looks a lot more dense than maybe the other one. So, I just, maybe it's in my own, maybe I'm just, I just, I was just curious about that.
Yes, uh, I apologize. I don't know the density of those items.
Yeah.
Um, to be able to compare. Perhaps Katie or someone could help us with that. Um, we are doing some special things with this. I'm pretty proud of the site plan. One thing that, uh, we're doing, uh, that the others haven't done, we actually have surrounded the entire perimeter of the site with a 20-foot jogging trail. So, we have more open space than these have typically provided in the past. Uh, we also have two kind of open space areas. You can see there, the one to the west or left where I'm looking, um, is actually more family oriented. Those are mostly two and three-bedroom units. And we've tried to orient those units around that open space for better visibility of the children. We have a splash pad out there and that kind of thing. The area on the other side where the large pool area is and the, and the clubhouse, uh, are mostly, uh, single bedroom and two bedrooms. A little bit different lifestyle that we're thinking there. And, um, our clubhouse is actually a clubhouse. Most of these just have a rental center. There's actually meeting rooms there. There's, uh, workout facility, restrooms. Um, so we're trying to raise the standard a little bit higher. Uh, we think we've invented a better mousetrap here. Um, and one of the things that I think is really going to be appealing to those who live here is that we don't allow trash trucks through this project. We have a separate area there at the northeast corner and we actually have valet service for all these homes. And it'll be a discreetly designed refuse container with a, a bench uh, outside of their house and, uh, the staff will collect that every day, six days a week and, uh, take it to that other facility. So, we won't have those large trash trucks coming through with all the danger and, and all the rest of that. Uh, so, we're quite proud of it and, uh, we think it's going to, uh, be a, a very nice addition to Goodyear.
Any other question? Vice Mayor?
Did we do a traffic study for this location?
Yes, there was a traffic study provided.
No impact to, uh, for, for the Facebook Live people? That's where I'm driving to, so.
Well, uh, the, the traffic study did show that the intersection of Yuma and 173rd currently has warrants for a traffic signal. That's why we have that stipulation. I understand that it's in the Goodyear CIP and we are responsible for 25% of that cost. Thank you very much.
No, thank you.
But in regard to, yeah, that's right. Uh, in regard to, uh, traffic generation, there was no impact per se on the, uh, capacity of 173rd or on Yuma by our project. This was already always planned in the Canyon Trails master plan as, uh, a court home plus cluster type, type of project. So, uh, that was all accounted for in the sizing and spacing of, of the, uh, the roadways.
Hit it on the head. Thank you.
Councilmember Hampton?
Let's have you for Rebecca. How soon do we see a light potentially going in there or the need for one? Is it already in the CIP? Maybe I missed that.
Thank you, councilmember Hampton, and it is already in the CIP. I think it is for this next fiscal year. If not, and it's warranted, we'll certainly work with our budget and finance department to possibly ship that around.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I think it looks good.
Much for answering all those questions and, uh, it's a, it's a good community. I, I've driven through it just recently and it, it looks good. Um, and so, thank you very much for being in Goodyear. Alright, let's do a roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cano?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Alright, will the city clerk please read ordinance number 2019-1439 by title only?
Adopt ordinance 2019-1439, rezoning approximately 22 acres of land, generally located at the northwest corner of Yuma Road and 173rd Avenue from the PAD, Planned Area Development Zoning District to the PAD, Planned Area Development Zoning District. Amending the zoning map of the city of Goodyear, providing for non-abridgement, providing for corrections, providing for severability, providing for an effective date and providing for penalties.
Thank you. Can I have a motion a second to approve ordinance 2019-1439? Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Vice Mayor Stip and a second by, um, councilman Loretano. Open for council discussion. No discussion, roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cano?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Alright, the next item in business, a public hearing to consider the rezon approximately 45.51 acres to the DeRosa Ranch Plan Area PAD. Public hearing open. Katie Wilken, Planning Manager, presenting again.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. And if it is okay with council, my presentation covers both this item and item number 23, which is the preliminary plat for the same project. The subject property is located southeast of Cotton and Yuma Road. It includes vacant property used for agricultural purposes as well as the property where Romans Oasis sits. Currently, um, a little less than six acres is zoned agricultural urban and that's where Romans Oasis is located. And then the balance of the property is part of the Canyon Trails Phase 2 PAD. Um, portion of it is commercial and a portion of it is designated for residential court home development. The proposed PAD zoning would designate 14 acres for commercial and 31.5 acres for residential development. There's also an area between the commercial and residential for a flex zone and that provides basically some flexibility in where that line between the commercial and the residential sits. The commercial would be, um, very similar to the city's C2 general commercial, um, zoning district, but the permitted use list and development standards are fully contained within the DeRosa Planned Area Development Book. The residential would develop as a pocket neighborhood and I do know the applicant has additional information regarding what a pocket neighborhood is. There is a conceptual site plan, um, that is stipulated. Development must be in conformance with this, um, conceptual site plan and that helps us define what the pocket neighborhood is, but we do in one of the stipulations further define the pocket neighborhood, um, which I'll get to in just a minute. If it doesn't develop as the pocket neighborhood, then it has to follow the city's R1C zoning district, which is the city's court home zoning district, which is very similar to the current zoning. So, it'd either be the pocket neighborhood or the court home. The commercial will be commercial regardless. Um, there's a maximum of 315 dwelling units, um, permitted to develop on the site. So, the pocket neighborhood, um, defined in the ordinance, is a grouping of, um, smaller residents, about six to 12. Um, it includes a mix of housing types such as single-family detached, single-family attached, um, casitas, um, live above garage units. Um, they're typically centered around some type of courtyard or open space. Um, and cars are not necessarily located on the individual lots, but as you can see, um, this is a graphic from the design guidelines included in the PAD. Um, there might be a garage off to the side that serves the grouping of residences. The conceptual site plan also included community facilities, um, such as a park with a community center and pool. There is a stipulation requiring that this community facility be provided with the development of the neighborhood. It may not be exactly as depicted in this conceptual site plan, but a facility of this magnitude will need to be provided with the development. Also, as part of this development, um- Also, as part of this development, Romans Oasis will be moved. It's generally located in this area I circled today, and it's in the future right-of-way for Yuma Road. So that'll be relocated into a new building about where the star is, but it could be located anywhere in the commercial. We don't specify. It has to be in that exact location. As one of the stipulations and exhibit to the zoning is that because of the unique nature of the Romans Oasis signage is they requested that they be able to keep that signage. So we documented their current signage, and that'll be considered legal conforming once the building moves so that they can keep that as part of the history of Goodyear, one of our first businesses in Goodyear area. And that's just a picture depicting, I think you're all familiar with Romans Oasis, their signage and their knickknacks that they have around the facility. A neighborhood meeting was held on March 6th, 2019. We have not received any objections to the request. As I stated, there is a preliminary plat in for review along with the rezoning. It's approximately 45 acres as well. It includes creating 109 single-family lots and 14 tracts. We do anticipate that there'd be a condo plat to create some of those casitas and live above units, but that would come through city council through another plat process for approval. The rezone request is in conformance with our general plan review criteria. The submitted preliminary plat has been found to be in conformance with the submitted PED, obviously. If the rezoning were not to be approved, then the preliminary plat would not be able to be approved. I did have one item to note. We did find a Scribner's error in the legal description. And so we would request that city council approve the rezoning, but allowing the city to correct the Scribner's error, it states the acreage is 45.51 acres, and it should be 46.51 acres. And so we would like to update that Scribner's error and then replace the legal description with the corrected legal description. This is not any kind of substantive change. It's actually was just a difference between gross and net acreage. So staff recommended approval, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the rezoning request and the preliminary plat request at their meeting. So that concludes my presentation.
Yes, is the applicant here, Jason?
Yes, they are.
It's not Jason. Yes, for true. Yeah. Hello?
Good evening, Mayor. Wendy Riddell with the Law firm, Barry Riddell, 6750 East Camelback. My pleasure to be here this evening on behalf of urban fabric builders. Like any good lawyer, I'm prepared to give a lengthy presentation. Alternatively, I'm happy to just answer any questions that you might have.
Well, thank you very much. Standby. We'll see if they're going to. Are there any speaker cards? Yes, Mayor. Myra Curtis. Welcome, Myra.
Thank you. Mayor Lord, members of the council, my name is Myra Curtis. I live at 20001 West Pasadena Avenue, Litchfield Park, Arizona, 85340. I am the owner of Romans Oasis. I know many of you. And I'm here tonight on behalf of Romans Oasis to thank you for your support over the years. Ever since we've annexed into the city, you've been very generous with us. My father was Roman. It was his livelihood, and it was his life. It was also his heart. And the reason I'm here to speak with you in addition to giving you that information is that I've been very fortunate to work with urban fabric developers or builders for this entire project. They have welcomed me and Romans into the project. I know how important Romans is to the community. It's been around for 32 years now. A great portion of that within the Goodyear city limits. I see how it impacts the community. I see the community that it builds. And what's so special is that the developers here, urban fabric builders, they are very professional in what they do. They are, they look at this project as a whole in the community and building community, and it literally fits in with the spirit of Romans. And I'd like to thank you for the additional consideration of the signage that actually helps create the ambiance that Romans is. And thank you for letting us keep our chicken. But, but thank you very much for working with urban fabric builders. They have really been a godsend through this project. We appreciate it.
Thank you. It's nice seeing you this evening. Any other?
No, Mayor.
All right. Would anybody in the audience like to speak? All right, then I'm gonna close the public hearing. Will the city clerk please read Resolution number 2019-1962 by title only?
Adopt Resolution 2019-1962, declaring as public records those certain documents filed with the city clerk entitled Official Supplementary Zoning Map, number 18-05A, legal description exhibit DeRosa Ranch PAD Development Standards Book dated March 28th, 2019, conceptual pocket neighborhood site plan, community park and recreation center, and Romans Oasis signage.
Thank you. Can I have a motion of second to approve Resolution 2019-1962? Do I hear that motion?
Mayor, I have a que, is this the one we're supposed to be amending?
Oh, it is one.
Scribner's errors?
Along with the corrections?
So I'll go ahead and make the motion with the corrections. I believe the correction is in the ordinance, not the public record. So that'll be the next item.
So it's the next one?
Yeah, the next one.
The next one. Bill?
Yes, thank you. Next item.
Next one? All right, so we'll just go on this.
Not this one, but the next. Correct. All right, I made the motion.
Second.
All right, so we had a motion by Vice Mayor Stip and a second by Councilman Keno. Open for council discussion? Councilman Keno?
I just want to say that I appreciate the attention to detail of the historic impact of that whole corner, how the plan is to incorporate the DeRosa store motif into the development, and certainly the impact of Romans. If you Google Goodyear nightlife, Romans comes up, so it's very important to our city. So thank you all for preserving that iconic location.
Okay, any, oh, yes, Councilman Hampton.
Yeah, I also, I think it's gonna be a great concept. I like the look of the cottage-style homes, the green space, the community center, and then the fun, neat businesses with Romans as one of the anchors there. So I think it's a good, a good use of that area, and I'm looking forward to Romans and its next, its next life, so thank you.
Next life of Romans.
Yeah.
Well, I'm looking forward to the community. The way that it looks like it's going to be developed is going to be something different for Goodyear. And I think it fits the community very well, and it keeps the heritage going. So any other comments? All right, let's vote on it. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Keno?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Will the city clerk please read an ordinance number 2019-1432 by title only?
Adopt ordinance 2019-1432, conditionally rezoning approximately 45 acres of land located south of West Yuma Road, east of North Cotton Lane, future Loop 303, north of West Pima Street, and west of Canyon Trails Unit 4 South to amend the Canyon Trails Phase 2 PAD to the DeRosa Ranch Planned Area Development. Amending the zoning map of the City of Goodyear, providing for non-abridgement, providing for corrections, providing for severability, providing for an effective date, and providing for penalties.
Can I have a motion of second to approve ordinance 2019-1432, and I ask for the motion with the change?
Mayor, I'll go ahead and make that motion with the changes as recommended.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
So the motion was, does he need to re, do you, does he need to add anything to that motion? Just, just...
Just the changes noted by planning staff as far as...
Just the changes. You don't have to have a specific. All right, thanks. Okay. And was it second by Councilman Loretano? Was that you? All right, so roll call vote, please. Vice Mayor Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Keno?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Motion carries. Let's go to 22 on business to consider adopting Resolution 2019-1967, the infrastructure reimbursement agreement for the DeRosa Ranch. Donna Bronski, Assistant Attorney, will present. Donna?
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel. Well, this is really the third item that continues on with the DeRosa saga. And what we're talking about in this particular issue is the infrastructure reimbursement agreement. This agreement is an opportunity to have the ultimate improvements for Yuma Road completed adjacent to this property. On a high level, this agreement, the property owner will acquire and dedicate the right-of-way, design, build, and build the ultimate planned Yuma Road improvements adjacent to the PAD, and as you've already heard this evening, has entered into a private agreement to build a new building and move the existing Romans Oasis to its new location. In return, once those, all the Yuma Road improvements are done, the city will reimburse the owner of the revenues generated on-site. You, you should notice on your dais that with the, that there are two exhibits, two updated exhibits for the agreement. One shows the outline of the entire property, and that's the area that the funds will be collected for the reimbursement. And then there's also a phasing plan that just shows that Yuma will be started on the west side. The road improvements will be begun. At the same time, they'll be doing other site improvements and building the building for Romans. Then, once they can move Romans into its new building, they'll be able to demolish the existing building, and then they can continue on with the Yuma Road improvements for the eastern half of the property. I can go into more detail. That's in the, in the car this evening, or I'm available for any questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any speaker cards?
Just Ms. Riddle again, if, if we needed her to speak.
I can hear you at all.
If Ms. Riddle, if we needed her to speak again, she's available for comment if we need her.
All right. Well, then I'll just keep going right now, okay? Then, is there anybody in the audience that'd like to speak? Will the city clerk please read Resolution number 2019-1967 by title only?
Adopt Resolution number 2019-1967, conditionally approving the infrastructure reimbursement agreement for the Yuma Road improvements at DeRosa Ranch, providing conditions of approval and an effective date of such approval, providing directions for execution of the infrastructure reimbursement agreement for DeRosa Ranch by the city manager, authorizing the city manager to make the necessary budget transfers, providing directions regarding the recordation of the infrastructure reimbursement agreement for DeRosa Ranch, providing for an expiration, authorizing and directing future actions, and providing for an effective date of the resolution.
Thank you. Can I have a motion of second to approve Resolution 2019-JS-67? Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
I heard a motion by Councilman Hampton. Do I hear a second?
Second.
A second by Councilman Loretano. Open for council discussion?
I have a discussion.
Councilman Campbell?
I have a question. I just want clarification that the reimbursement that we're going to agree to is simply for the Yuma Road improvement. It is not cost of moving Romans building, just the road improvement. Is that correct?
Pretty much, council member. It's the, everything having to do with the road improvements, so it will also include the property cost. But you're right, it will not include the cost of moving the building or building the new building. That's a private agreement that the city's not part of at all.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Well, I want to congratulate you on this contract. This was a lot of detail. This is an unusual development with a lot of different circumstances surrounding, along with the history. And it took a lot on your part, our lawyer, and your part. Rory, nice job. Your office, nice job. So I think, I was really excited after I read all the details. I felt really assured that all the components were in place to make this a success. If everybody comes together and does their job, I think it's going to be an outstanding development. So kudos to you. Thank you very much. So let's do a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Keno?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
The next item on business to consider approving the preliminary plat for DeRosa Ranch. Katie Wilkum? I don't think you have to. You think it's all included in that one. So are there any speaker parts on this portion? All right, can I have a motion of second to approve the preliminary plat for DeRosa Ranch with stipulations? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Does this one need to be updated as well? Does this one need to be updated as well from 45 acres, or am I off? No, this is not the error?
Thank you. You're right. The title does say 45 acres, but there's nothing to update. The legal description included on the plat was correct.
Okay. Second.
Okay, so it's open for council discussion? Councilmember, Vice Mayor Stip?
I had the opportunity to meet with Mr. Cook this afternoon before the meeting. I, we're talking about the preliminary plat, so we're through everything. I'm very excited about the project, but there's no way that I could be as excited as he is about this project. So it'll be a very unique development for our community, for that part of the city, which really seems to be, I think, growing faster than anybody in the city really realizes how fast the west side is growing. So I just wanted to take this opportunity to say, welcome to the city. Thank you very much for making the investment in us, and look forward to seeing the outcome of this great project.
Thank you, Bill. Any other comments? All right, let's vote on this. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. So then I'm on right. We are at number 24 now, except where we're at. Thank you very much. So the next item is 24, to consider adopting Resolution number 2019-1959, approving the infrastructure development agreement for Project 10-11. Sarah Chilton, Deputy City Attorney, presenting. Sarah?
Mayor Lord, Vice Mayor Stip, council members. I'm here presenting the first substantive development agreement for the development of the project we've called Phoenix 1011. This is for the first, primarily for the first phase of that development of that piece of property, which is between MC85 and Broadway, just west of Litchfield Road. So the development agreement kind of has some general broad parameters, reiterating general obligations for the development of the entire property. It also provides some clarification on some of the intents. One of the obligations that we had is the city has committed to provide up to five NGD, but that is limited to the, to the property being used as data centers. We didn't want to get into a situation where maybe a big water bottler came in and wanted that sort of water. So this development agreement addresses that and clarifies that. If that happened, if the use changed on that property, then they would be limited to the water that would be identified in the IWMP for that designated use, which would be an industrial, I think it's about 1,500 gallons per day, per acre. The other general terms that we wanted to clear up is if we're providing wastewater, the intent has always been for the city to receive about 50%, or about 50% of that as industrial discharge to come back to replenish the water supply. So one of the requirements that we have in here is that if we're providing any water services, which we are under this agreement, the property will obtain all of wastewater services from the city. The phase one development, the first phase of it anticipates about 500,000 gallons of industrial discharge that will come back into the wastewater treatment plant. We currently have the capacity for that particular amount, but subsequent phases call for the construction of a raw water line, which will then be used. The water will be treated to the level of the source water, which is the SRP water that we'll be receiving, and that will be the industrial discharge that comes in and goes in for re-treatment as potable water. So those are some general obligations that we included to, to address. And then kind of the general reiteration of it's your obligation to construct all of the onsite and offsite infrastructure you needed for us to provide water and sewer. Owner wanted to clarify that they had the absolute discretion to develop as they saw fit, that there was no specific timing. So that also is included in this agreement, as well as their obligation to pay all applicable development and other development-related fees. One of the issues that came up, again, the plan has been for the development to return about 50% of the water it receives, so as a replenishment. If things change and we don't get that kind of return, we'll be looking in future development agreements for some sort of water resource fee to, to cover the replenishment costs we're incurring. As I stated, those are more general obligations. This in particular agreement is intended to address the obligation... This in particular agreement is intended to address the obligations for the Phase 1 development, which is that first building capable of taking up to one MGD of water a day. There's a bunch of lines that have to be, water lines and sewer lines. There is a water line that's coming down Litchfield Road, a sewer line that's going down Broadway Road, and a, or a water line going down Broadway Road, and a water line going through the property in what was a former La Comida alignment. The wastewater calls for two different types of, two different sizes of line within the Broadway alignment. In addition to the water and sewer, the only offsites that would be required with this particular development is half-street improvements for Broadway Road, which the owner would be responsible for constructing. The agreement clarifies that these are the only offsites, the ones that are identified in the development agreement. These are the only offsites that they're required to construct for that first phase of development. No building or, no certificates of occupancy will be issued until all of those improvements are constructed. One of the topics that we have is, we anticipate that the water lines and the sewer lines will be able to be constructed within existing right-of-way, but the city of Goodyear doesn't control the existing right-of-way. So, part of the owner's obligation is that they have to provide any sorts of easement or right-of-way needed for the improvements they're required to construct. Obviously, they don't have condemnation authority, so they are looking, nor are they in the business of acquiring right-of-way. They're looking to the city to assist us in that regard. So, the agreement includes terms that although they're financially responsible for paying for this, the city will take over the obligation to acquire any additional easements or right-of-ways if needed. One of the issues that came up through the negotiations was, what does that mean? Is it physically impossible? I mean, if it costs a billion dollars, but it's physically impossible, does that mean, you know, we won't assist them with, with that? We'd make them go in the right-of-way? So, the agreement talks about practical impossibility. If it's practically impossible, when considering what we would do for our own right-of-way projects, like if it was just too costly to engineer around a solution and we would seek condemnation, they want to have that same right, and the city engineer in this case, Rebecca Zip, would make that determination. So, if there was some practical impossibility of locating the lines within existing right-of-way, the city would then take over. They would provide us a legal description of the acquisition area. The city would then acquire appraisals. Once the appraisal was there, 15 days after that appraisal's issued, we would make our first offer, and within 45 days, if we haven't been able to close or acquire the property through just a voluntary acquisition, we would then initiate condemnation action and then seek immediate possession. The agreement calls for the property owner to financially secure the obligation either by a letter, irrevocable letter of credit, or providing escrow funds to cover the cost of the acquisitions and/or the condemnation. One of the unique features on this particular project, again, we've always been concerned about replenishment. The property owner, as a condition of the city providing water to the Phase 1 development, they're going to take all the necessary actions to meet the requirements for retirement and use of owners' existing irrigated, grandfathered irrigation water rights. They're going to retire their type 1 water rights, which would eliminate the city's obligation. There's all kinds of different requirements for that sort of thing to work, and that's outlined in the agreement, but that's the basic concept. We won't have to provide a replenishment source because they're relying on the existing rights associated with that property. In exchange, the city's agreeing to provide up to one MGD of development, or of water to serve that Phase 1 development. Now, the city has been very cautious about the obligations. There's a couple waiver provisions in the agreement. We have a waiver for any kind of claims arising out of the determination of whether there's a physical impossibility that would trigger the condemnation right or the city's responsibility for acquiring the right-of-way, because if Rebecca doesn't make that determination, then the property owner would be responsible for acquiring the right-of-way they need. There's also a waiver of any sort of claims related to, well, we clearly state we're not guaranteeing uninterrupted delivery of service, and there's a waiver for claims for arising out of the interrupted delivery of service under certain conditions. They include, oh, there's a waiver of claims for disruption caused by events beyond our control, and that would be like acts of God, strikes, riots, wars, failure to receive necessary shipments of required materials, judicial orders, regulatory changes. It would cover to disruptions caused by emergency repairs. It would, would cover disruptions caused by scheduled repairs, although we have agreed to provide them advance notice and to work with them to minimize the disruption to their operations to the extent possible. It would also extend to disruptions caused by the ordinary negligence of city employees. And in, it would also extend to disruption caused by willful misconduct of city employees and agents, except for the senior management team, including the council members, the city manager, deputy city managers, and the directors of the various departments. So, if you go out and cut the water line on purpose, we're going to pay. And finally, there would obviously be a waiver for any kind of disruption caused by termination of service for non-payment. Again, we would have, give them an opportunity to cure that. There is one provision that they asked for that was reasonable in our mind, that they asked that the waiver not extend to the right to seek specific performance, where they could go to court and say, hey, we think they have the ability to perform, can you make them do what they're supposed to do under the agreement? So, that claim would still exist, not in, notwithstanding that waiver. The other things that were addressed were really related to future development. There's a site plan that was approved for a second building, but they don't, haven't locked up the water resources for the second building. So, the agreement is very clear, no, no building permits will be issued for future buildings until the water needs and wastewater needs are addressed for, for that. With respect to future water supplies, I think plans have changed since the project was first presented. I think initially, the thought was, they would come in and take water, me, all the water immediately, and the city's plan was to use that to fund infrastructure needed to replenish that water supply. But, you know, circumstances change, so we don't have that ability to have that sort of commitment. So, with respect to future water supplies, we will not issue any first, future building supply, or building permits until we have another development agreement in place, which requires them to construct all of the improvements necessary for that future water supply. We provide for reimbursement out of the rates, which is kind of what we were intending to do this way, but now, we don't know when that will come, and we can't lock up the water without having the rates coming in for them, for the water to, so that we can replenish it. So, we've tried to address all eventualities. Certainly, we will be back before you again as the property continues to develop, but this is where we're at, kind of gives you an overall of what can be, what will happen in the future and what is required for the Phase 1 development.
Thank you, Sarah. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Do we have anybody other than the wanted to speak tonight represent? All right, then we, thank you. Will the city clerk please read Resolution Number 2019-1959 by title only?
Adopt Resolution Number 2019-1959, approving the infrastructure development agreement for Project 10-11, directing the city manager to execute the development agreement, authorizing and directing actions, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Can I have a motion a second to approve Resolution 2019-1592? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second. I heard a motion by Councilman Hampton, and a second by Councilman, I want to say vice all the time, I can't get it out. Councilman Campbell. Okay, open for council discussion. Well, again, to Rory, to Sarah, thank you. This is really unusual and from the past of applicant to come in, and I want to compliment you on their dialogue about water, because you know our citizens were concerned, and, and, and good on them that they're, they're watching what we're doing.
There was a lot of support through his whole team, Winnet and Javier. It was a complicated issue, and Doug was there talking about financing, Rebecca was there talking about engineering, so it was truly a, a team effort, grueling for all of us.
Well, it's kind of a real welcome to the southwest in Arizona, right?
Yes.
I mean, that's kind of our welcome card, okay? We have just a slight problem here that we have to rectify and work through, but compliments to the company and to staff, because it wasn't just, it was you and Rory, but everybody worked on this, and, and so, I just think our staff has just done a great job, and thank you very much for all of those. So, we're to vote on it. Roll call.
Vice Mayor Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Kano?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano? Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Thank you, Sarah. Next item is 25, to consider approving the replat for Lot 1 of minor land division for the part of the future Phoenix 10-11 Phase 1, and a final plat for the Phoenix 10-11 Phase 1, subject to stipulation. Hello, Karen. Karen, favorite plan of three, presenting.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, counsel. You, this is the Phoenix 10-11 property that you would remember from the rezone that went through the process on the south side of MC-85 down to Broadway Road. And as you can see on the aerial, there's several blue lines throughout that red boundary, and that represents 42 platted lots that exist on the property currently. And those lots come from a plat that was done in 1983 by the town of Goodyear. It has 17 lots in the northern portion, and then it totals out at 40 lots in the southern portion of that. Then, in 1985, another plat was done by the town of Goodyear that created four more lots. Two of those, A and B, are part of the Phoenix 10-11 property. And those lots remain platted since then, and nothing happened on the property until Phoenix 10-11 purchased it. And staff did a minor land division on the southern portion of the property just in February that combined parcels A and B into one lot, so that they could begin building their first data center. You can't build over property lines, so we needed to, to do that, to combine that. But at the same time, we did not release those parcels from that 80s plat. So, what's before you tonight is a replat of that minor land division. Looks exactly the same, but it now releases those lots from that old plat. And together with those released lots, Phoenix 10-11 has created a, a final plat for all of their property that they own now, from Broadway up to MC-85. And it creates a total of six lots on that property that was once 42 lots. And it goes all the way down to Broadway Road. The parcel two that you see here is for the APS substation that's being built adjacent to the data center buildings. And here's where the, the site access is in off of Broadway Road. So, we're kind of taking that massive lots that have been around since the 80s, and we're setting up the, the parcels for Phoenix 10-11 for their development of the property, and we ask that you approve that.
Thank you, Karen. Appreciate it. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? All right, can I have a motion a second to approve the replat for Lot 1 of minor land division for a part of the future Phoenix 10-11 Phase 1, and the final plat for Phoenix 10-11 Phase 1, subject to stipulation? Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilman Campbell, and a second by Councilman Loretano. Okay, open for council discussion. No discussion. All right, let's vote on it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Karen, thank you. All right, the next item is 26, to approving the preliminary plat for Compass Data Centers, subject to stipulation, and Karen's back with her presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. The Compass Data Center plat property extends from just south of Van Buren on the west side of Bullard Avenue, all the way down to Yuma Road. There is also a, an APS substation site right here, and that is currently under construction. And just as a reminder of how we got here, in March of this year, the council approved the Goodyear Airport Commons PAD, right at the corner of Van Buren and Bullard. And the southern half of that property was zoned industrial, light industrial within that PAD. Then, in March, whoops, I skipped ahead one, I'm sorry. Then in March, also, council approved the West Bullard North PAD overlay. And here's that APS substation I showed you on the first aerial. That was a rezoning from agricultural urban to light industrial. And then, also, that same night, council approved the West Bullard South PAD overlay that's on Bullard down at Yuma Road. And that was light industrial and general commercial, and it went to all light industrial. And again, there's that APS substation site. So, those three parcels were combined and submitted and processed with a site plan application by Compass Data Centers. And as you see, you saw this in the rezoning, but as a reminder, these are the data center buildings themselves in orange. On either side of those buildings are the outside equipment yards. Here's the APS substation that's under construction, and then two additional sites for substations that are on the property. Once the site plan was approved, Compass Data Centers acquired all that property from the individual owners, and they have submitted this plat, again, to consolidate the parcels and get rid of the property lines, because they need to be able to build on all the property, and they can't build over the property lines. The plat also creates the parcel for the second substation to be built. Here's the one under construction. It also dedicates Bullard Wash right-of-way. It creates some additional open space to the west of the wash, and down here at the corner of Yuma and Bullard, it creates the parcel that will be dedicated to the city that will be included in our Bullard Avenue Enhanced Landscape Program. And staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission are recommending approval of this plat.
Thank you. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? Can I have a motion a second to approve the preliminary plat for Compass Data Centers, subject to stipulation? Do I hear a motion?
So, second?
I heard a motion from Vice Mayor Stip, and a, a second from Councilman Hampton. Open for council discussion? Councilman Hampton?
So, I know you mentioned the things on the site here. I see some bodies of water. Are those going to be full of water at all times, or are they drainage? I see, I think I see three, at least three bodies of water there.
Jeff, can we go back to the presentation, please?
For cooling, or is it just coloring? Says retention. I think it says retention on there.
Go ahead and answer them.
Here, I can.
What'd you say?
There we go. Thank you. Here, on this?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, the, the lighter blue is the Bullard Wash, and these darker blue areas are the retention to serve the site.
So, retention?
Retention basin.
Just, okay, so just for drainage of, of rainwater, things like that?
Correct.
Not for the cooling body of water, like a nuclear power plant might have?
No, no, it's just the retention basins, but, you know, so much of the site is covered in impervious surface, you end up with, where you can fit them in, these very large retention basins to, to accommodate all the stormwater runoff.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, let's vote on it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next item is 27, is to consider approving the purchase of the new Goodyear Ballpark in Next item is 27, is to consider approving the purchase of the new Goodyear Ballpark Video Display Board. Bruce Kissman, Ballpark General Manager, presenting.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the council. I am here for you this evening with a request for your consideration of authorizing the expenditure of $975,000 for the purchase of a new ballpark video board, scoreboard, and complete a contract amendment with Daktronics. Just a few weeks ago, a total of $1,069,000 was approved in the FY20 CIP for the renovation, purchase, and installation of the video display board and the associated audiovisual equipment at the ballpark. And what you're looking at before you here is the current view of the video board. The video board does sit right in the middle, scoreboard below, and we do have static ad panels on both sides of that display. What the new video board will do now is take up all that area and make that a full digital display. It'll stand approximately 26 feet tall, 52 feet wide, again, full HD video, which is featuring some of the latest technology that's available in the large screen format for outdoor venues. This also does give us some flexibility to still keep the static ad panels. We can move those around, but then we can also, with the front-end system, be able to segment the board and utilize it in various different ways, but it'll really create some unique opportunities for sponsorship and also to engage the fans with the fan experience, something as simple as adding the lineups on the side, so people can keep track throughout the game who's at bat. And again, the options are kind of limitless on this, and it's a very exciting project. And to keep trying to enhance our fan experience, for those that do sit out in the left-field berm area, even with the larger display, the sightlines out there, you still will not be able to see the scoreboard. So, with this, we'll be adding a scoreboard along the first base side. That'll be directly front view of those sitting in that area, and so they'll be able to follow along with the game as well. It is staff's recommendation to approve the expenditure of funds in the amount of $975,000 to purchase new video display, line, scoreboard, and complete the contract amendment with Daktronics. That concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Bruce. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? Can I have a motion a second to approve the expenditure of the funds in the amount of $975,000 for the purchase, renovation, and installation of the new video display board, a new line scoreboard, and complete a contract amendment with the Daktronics, Inc. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion from Councilman Campbell and a second from Councilman Hampton. Open for council discussion. No discussion. All of them, vote on it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
Yay.
You got your scoreboard.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, let's go to 28. The last item on business is to consider adopting ordinance 2019-1426, setting the property tax levies for the fiscal year 2019-2020. Welcome, Lori.
Thank you. Nice to be here. I'll have to have Bruce start doing my presentations and build me a scoreboard or something like that, so. We are here in the last step of the budget adoption process for the FY20 budget to allow us to pay for things like that scoreboard. We've obviously spent a lot of time with you going through that budget. This is just to give you a sense of how these property tax revenues are used. The secondary property tax pays debt service on voter-approved secondary property tax-funded bonds, so those are those bonds that will pay for something like the recreation campus, the fire stations, and the civic center. The primary property tax is a portion of the revenue that's used to pay for the day-to-day operations of this fund. So, that's operations such as parks, fire, general government. And that's almost, it's about 9% of the revenue that's used to support that part of the budget. You've seen this slide before. Essentially, the property tax, the combined rate will slightly decline, although due to appreciation, the city of Goodyear property tax paid by a home will increase by almost $8.50 on every $100,000 of existing valuation. With that, I'm asking for your approval of ordinance 2019-1426, adopting the property tax levies.
Thank you very much. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? Will the city clerk please read ordinance Number 2019-1426 by title only?
Adopt Ordinance Number 2019-1426, levying upon the assessed valuation of the property within the city of Goodyear, subject to primary and secondary taxation, a certain sum upon each $100, $100 of valuation sufficient to raise the amounts estimated to be required in the annual budget for the purpose of paying for various expenses, to raise the amount estimated to be received from other sources of revenues, providing funds for various bond redemptions for the purpose of paying principal and interest upon bonded indebtedness, all for fiscal year ending the 30th day of June 2020.
Thank you. Can I have a motion a second for your approved ordinance Number 2019-1426? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second. All right, I heard a motion by Vice Mayor Stip and a second by Councilman Loretano. Open for council discussion. Good job. Thank you very much.
You too.
All along, every time you get up and give a presentation, it's been great. Thank you. All right, let's roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Kano?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Good job.
All right, guys, eight-elevens, not bad. So, council, any information items you want, our comments, reports, anything?
How about inquiry to staff? When's that? I have a couple of inquiries to staff.
All right, I'm going to let her do her inquiry for staff, so.
Mine are really simple. I ask this every month or every meeting. An update on visitors at Palm Valley. I'm getting nervous. It's still dirt. If there's any development at all at Falcon and Indian School, have they pulled any permits or anything for the apartments there? And I would like to just throw out on the floor for PD to consider a possible back-to-school information meeting for students and parents on vaping and the dangers thereof. Just a thought.
All right. Any other? Councilman Hampton?
Do we need to do anything about this aeromodel flying park? Is that something we need to talk about later, or, I don't know if we want, just to brought up as an idea, or I'm not sure how to address that now that we have the information?
If I may, Mayor, yes. Nathan, Parks and Recreation Director, will be meeting, or has already met, I believe, with them just to see what the concept is and whether or not it will fit within any of our current or future park plans.
Sounds like it's early stage, yeah. This is just kind of an idea, so it'll take some time. Vice Mayor Stip? Oh, he had another question. Sorry.
I think that's all I have.
Okay.
I think so.
All right.
Just a quick update. We had the Valley Metro Board of Directors meeting last week on Thursday and the Audit and Finance Subcommittee meeting on Tuesday last week. We approved the budget for 2020. Couple of things of note. One, the work from the Audit and Finance Subcommittee over the last few months resulted in, and this is for Sherri's benefit, I am also a part of the chief uncle group at Valley Metro. So, the overall budget from the time that it started to the time that it was approved was $1.5 million less, and without changing or affecting any of the service delivery, which was good. We also had a very interesting presentation on what they call fare leakage, and that is the number of folks that are paying for their fares with reduced ticket that may or may not qualify for that. So, there's a lot of changes coming down from Valley Metro in the future about how they're ticketing, how they're paying, et cetera. Before, the entire system switches over to a smart card, like many of us experienced in DC. So, a lot of very interesting times going on at Valley Metro.
A little bit of money lost during that time, it sounds like. Wow. Any other? All right. City manager, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have anything this evening.
Nothing?
I don't.
Oh, my goodness. All right, well, then, the next meeting will be a special joint work session on Wednesday, June 16th, and then the next will be July 1st for the regular meeting at 6:00 PM. No further business. This meeting is adjourned.